All right, I'm gonna call to order the May 21st Board of Trustees Meeting. If we can please stand for a moment of silence. Forward. Thank you, and now the presentation of the colors by the West Ashley High School JROTC. Forward. March. Color guard, hop. Left, face. Present. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Colors. Ready, cut. Left, face. Forward, march. Color guard, hop. Color guard dismissal. Thank you very much.
Chairman Tiara, I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approval of the consent agenda item. Motion by Mr. Garrett.
Second.
Do I have a second, and a second by Ms. Coates? All right, do you have any questions? All right, Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes.
A move adopt, adopt minutes as written.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, a motion by Mr. Garrett and a second by Ms. Coates to approve the minutes of the April 23rd Board meeting. Do I have any questions? Ms. Coates? How do you vote?
Vote yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I was distracting her, I apologize.
Mr. Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
I'm standing.
Okay, Ms. Jeffrey?
You know.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next items on our agenda are a number of special recognition, so let Taylor start with those.
Good evening Chair Darby, Vice Chair Matt, members of the board, Dr. Postaway and special guests. We have several special recognitions for this evening, so I get started by asking the Mark Cobb and Ramit Wurth Scholarship recipients to please come forward. We would like to first thank Mr. Ramit Wurth and the family members of Mark Cobb for being with us this evening and for their continued support of granting scholarships to CCSD students who have met all of the scholarship qualifications, including being a child of a CCSD employee. As we mentioned in previous board meetings, the Charleston County School District's Operations Division hosted the 16th Annual Golf Tournament to benefit the Mark Cobb Memorial Ramit Wurth Scholarship Fund back in October. Congratulations to the students who are this year's scholarship recipients. They are Emily Alexis Cordley, who attends James Island Charter High School. She will be attending Winthrop University and majoring in early childhood education. Mary Catherine McConnell, who attends Wando High School. She will be attending the University of South Carolina for the upcoming school year and has been accepted into their Doctor of Pharmacy Program in the beginning of 2020. Georgia Peeden, who also attends Wando High School, who will be attending the University of South Carolina, majoring in nursing, and she wants to become a nurse practitioner. Kelsey Thomas, who attends the Academic Magnet High School. She will also be attending the University of South Carolina and will major in experimental psychology in hopes to earn a Masters in occupational therapy. And finally Lance Wilder, who attends the School of the Arts. He will be attending the University of South Carolina, majoring in public health, and he plans to pursue a nursing degree in hopes of becoming a traveling nurse. The National Merit Corporate Sponsored Scholarship recipients. The following seven CCSD students were recognized for being named the 2018 National Merit Corporate Sponsored Scholarships by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. From Academic Magnet, we have Evelyn Thye, Greg Gardner, Alexander Huckaber, and Jenny Yao. From the School of the Arts, we have Finley McCormick, and from Wando, we have Annabelle Leon and Logan Tetter. They are part of the first group of winners in the 63rd Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Let's give them a round of applause. We were also going to recognize from Wando, the AP Micro-Macro-Economics champs. Their student, the students recently placed first and second for winning the state competition last month on AP Economics. Their, they were under the direction of their teacher Tammy Basil, and students competed in the National Economic Challenge this past weekend in New York City. Let's give them a round of applause. Also, we would want to recognize a U.S. Presidential Scholar. Her name is Jenny Yao. She's a senior at Academic Magnet, as well as Anne Webb, who's a senior at Wando. They were both honored for their accomplishments of making the list of semifinalists in the 2018 U.S. Scholars Program. Let's give them a round of applause. And finally, the School of the Arts Senior Caleb Smith. He was honored for winning the Optimus International State Board Football Competition earlier this month. He will travel to St. Louis to compete in the regional and world championships. Let's give Caleb a round of applause. And now I'm gonna ask Mr. Bob Olson, who's CCSD's Athletic Director, to come forward to recognize our student athletes for winning state competitions.
Dr. Postaway, board members, I'm very proud this year to let you know that we had another banner year in athletics. We had 236 state champions this year. This time I'd like to recognize them. All of them could not be here because of the transportation issues, but those that are here, I would like to recognize. With not able to make it this evening was Colin Baker. Colin was a two-time state champion this year in the 2A Boys Cross Country and 3200-meter state, 300, 3200-meter run. This is the first back-to-back state champion Academic Magnet has had in track. From Academic Magnet, 2A Boys State Championship Soccer Team. Soccer team this year had a 19-3 record. They defeated St. Joseph in penalty kicks for the championship game winner coming in the sixth penalty kick. They're coached by Jason Hamill. Please join me in congratulating the Academic Magnet High School Boys Soccer Team. From Academic Magnet High School, the 2A Girls State Soccer Champions. The girls had a record this year of 21, 4, and 1. They defeated Southside Christian 2-1 in the championship game. They've won six state titles in the last eight years, two titles in a row. They're coached by Allison DeLong. Please join me in congratulating Academic Magnet High School Grove Soccer Team. From Academic Magnet, the 2A Boys State Championship Team could not make it this evening, but they are the second state title in three years with the 5-2 victory over St. Joe's Catholic. They're coached by Steve Percy. Please join me in congratulating the Academic Boys Tennis Team. From Baptist Hill High School, the Single A Girls Track State Champions in the 4x100 relay. Team members included Kayla Bemmett, Rosalyn Bryant, Alaya Brown, and Alana Foster. They're coached by Ebony Tap Brown, Russell Feaster, and Carlton Solomon. Please join me in congratulating the relay team from Baptist Hill. From James Island High School. Two-time, two-time state champion this year, Zahari Nelson. She won the discus 136 feet 7 inches in the shot flip 41 feet 3 inches. She's, she's coached by Jeremy Morris. Please join me in congratulating Zahari Nelson for winning two state championships this year. From Military Magnet. Single A State Champions in the 400-meter relay, Kevin Holman, Aubrey Wright, Rashawn Brown, Richard Smith. Also 100-meter state champion and 200-meter champion, Richard Smith, and the 400-meter hurdle champion, Augustus Frazier. Team is coached by Mark Vollemann, Devani Smith. They finished runner-up this year, missing the state championship as a team by just one point. Please join me in congratulating the state champions from Military Magnet Academy. We had a state champion from North Charleston High School in the 2A Wrestling State Championship in the 126-pound division, Anthony Jelly Wells, could not make it this evening. He's a senior finishing his fourth year in wrestling. He was also state runner-up last year at 120 pounds, coached by Devon Robb. Please join me in congratulating Anthony Jelly Wells from North Charleston. From Wando High School, the 5A Lacrosse State Champions. Team had a season record of 12-4. They defeated Dutch Fork 15-8 in the state championship game. This was their fourth straight state title and their sixth state title in seven years. Coached by Lance Reddys, please join me in congratulating the state champions from Wando High School. Also from Wando High School, the 5A Boys State Soccer Champions. This year's team had a season record of 28-0, defeated Nation Ford in the state final. This win marked the 54th consecutive win for the boys soccer team, breaking the state record of 46 consecutive wins held by Riverside from 1989 to 1992. This team has also been ranked number one in the nation for the second year in a row. This is the second state championship for the boys soccer team in a row, and it's the eighth state championship they've won at Wando High School. They're coached by Cheryl Tisdale. Please join me in congratulating the state champions from Wando High School. And finally, from Wando High School, we have the 5A State Champions in Swimming. Members of the, the boys team could not be with us tonight, but we do have members from the girls state championship team. Their record this year was 6-0. Their coach is Cheryl Burden and Allison Brown. Please join me in congratulating the state champions from Wando High School. One left. Wando High School, 5A Boys Track. Wando was very talented this year in track. They won both the boys and the girls. These are the boys on the state championship team, and also on the team is David Kowalczek, who was the state champion. David, raise your hand if you're here. David with a pro of 166, 9 inches. Please join me in congratulating the boys state champions from Wando High School. And finally, we have the girls from Wando High School, 5A Track State Champions. As I stated before, this team is also coached by Kevin Schreiber. They were state champions this year. They had a three-time state champion. Zanaya, please raise your hand. Zanaya Lawrence won state championship in the 200 meter and the lob jump. Please can, join me in congratulating Zanaya Lawrence and the rest of the team from Wando High School for their state championship this year. Thank you.
This concludes tonight's special recognition. Congratulations, and as parents are leaving, congratulations. I see my child's former PE teacher out there and noting that she is proud of her son. She and her husband are proud of her son, so we know how much work it takes from parents and children alike, so thank y'all very much and congratulations. And thank CCSD staff who coordinated all that. Okay, next on the agenda is item number three, which is visitor and public comments, which I don't think we have listed up here yet, but we're getting it.
Do we have the list of public comments?
Just, we're pausing for just a moment to get ourselves organized in the spirit. Who's speaking next? Are you listening to the music? We're a little bit out of order today because we wanted to have all of our students recognized, so we did that a little bit earlier, so please just bear with us getting ourselves organized. Thank you. There you go.
Okay, we have 10 speakers tonight for public comments. So first off, we have Deborah Brandt and Farison, and I have Dr. Linda. Dr. Linda, you're here? Thank you so kindly. And Christian White, and then Brendan Brown, in that one, please.
Good evening, good evening. Here on behalf of Farison in regards to the transition of the Montessori school as well as traditional school. Number one is that we're a little bit upset. One, because we did ask to be on the meeting of the whole agenda so that therefore we don't really have to come before the board to discuss some information at this time. But seeing that we're not there, then we're here today to discuss some information, probably having to move forward. Number one is, of course, Ms. Jeffrey, if she can, please contact Elise Arden-Matt and let her know what was the reason for not calling, even though she may have set up some arrangements with other members of the school board. We did speak to them, but here again, there's nothing missed to find, and that's where the problem's coming right now, and the budget's about to be closed with the final reading. So we come before in regards to renovation of Farison. We know that the renovation's gonna come up for the Montessori school. We need to see in detail and outline what's the timeline on that. Also, in regards to two assistance for the after-school program for the Montessori school. The plan that was written up for Montessori, we did accept it. We were happy to move forward with it, but here again, we did not keep out of all the information that's needed to present to our parents, let them know that, okay, you may not have any after-school program, that creates a problem. In addition to that, what we also want to touch base on is the third grade classes in that plan, which is going to be your 2019, yeah, 1920, if I'm not mistaken, and what happens is it's not next year, but the year after, just to clear that up. That third grade class is scheduled not to be at Farison. We need clarification of that. We need to define that, that those kids are going to be there, if you have to, we have to come up with a solution. Solution is have a Montessori class just as well as a traditional class, so that we can complete the transition on it. So these things are important to us. We want to still meet with the, with the meeting of the whole, so that we can define these things before this budget reading is final, so therefore we're not letting them know.
My concern, I'm Dr. Linda Giannella. My concern is about the new dismissal for the three-year-olds at Farison. Being a mother of four, and another and another four, and over 10 years of Montessori schools in three other states where dismissal time was always 3 o'clock, so I'm very concerned about the new dismissal time for the three-year-olds, because it places a burden on parents where no after-school is available. Parents may look at other schools, you know, where dismissal is more like 3 o'clock. So my question to the board is why is there inequity? Why can't you provide for a 3 o'clock dismissal when other schools like Angel Oak has a kaleidoscope after-school program with a 3 o'clock dismissal? Thank you.
Christian White and Brendan Ryan will follow thereafter. And Eric Jackson.
Hello, my name's Kristen White. Thank you for all you're doing for this opportunity. I'm a parent and a former teacher for the district. My daughter Rosalie is about to graduate fifth grade at Bell Hall Elementary, and we are asking for her to be transferred for her appeal, to be transferred from Lang Middle School to Mulholland Middle School based on medical hardship that we are dealing with her very specifically. Our neighborhood is known for Lang, which is a STEM school. It is a technology magnet, and from touring the school, I learned that every student's issued an iPad. 60 to 80% of the school day is spent on iPads and technology devices, as well as the principal there told me his concern was that homework was also done. The majority of the homework was done on these devices, and that would make a hard accommodation for STEM teachers. My daughter has been coming home from Bell Hall with headaches, dizziness, nausea, basically medical issues, physical reactions to when they've been using MacBooks in school. She's not a child who gravitates to the iPad like the typical kid that you see, and we realize now through her doctor's help that it's because it's physically making her ill. The doctor has recommended through a note that she not attend a STEM school because of her well-being, and it would not be appropriate educational environment for her. As great of a school it is, we are requesting that she could instead be transferred to Mulholland Middle School through touring both schools. I've seen the difference, and that Mulholland is not a STEM school, and that students have more opportunity for more traditional methods of learning. It's in our district. We feel that she meets all the district's criteria, and that to ensure her success and just give her the appropriate opportunities that this accommodation could be made, and that this transfer versus asking for you to grant. And again, the principal at Lang is an amazing guy, and I, just speaking with him, I could see his reservation about her attending that school, knowing that their STEM classification is what they're so proud of and what other students need to be there for. But that for my daughter in this unique circumstance, based on her doctor's recommendation, what we've seen with her health, that we please not put her in that position, that would set her up for failure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Jackson. Melissa Watson.
Good evening, board. My name is Eric Jackson. I'm standing up here representing the Burke High School SIC. I'm the SIC chairman, and for the last past three to four years, we have been working on a plan to increase student participation and campus participation at Burke High School. On the last D-24 meeting, we had a presentation of a plan to renovate our entrance, and the plan was not quite acceptable. And I'll comment to you, Chairman Darby, Chairman Darby, just to let you know that. The plan has been approved in the budget, but the way we have the plan drawn up, we would have to wait two more years and have to use a additional entrance on the west side of the building. If y'all are not familiar with the west side of the building, it's not gonna happen. So we come here as a board, and we come here just to let y'all know that it's already in the budget. Please revisit the plan. If possible, let's get it done this year. We've been waiting on this entrance for the last three to four years, and it's really not appealing for our parents to participate, and our students don't feel welcome coming into the school, and we need to get this addressed as soon as possible. We also have suggestions. Before you write up another plan, please come talk to the principal. We got SIC members that's willing to work with the planning, but we have to come up with a better plan for the entrance of the school. We have, what can be done this year, we would have to have the additional entrance, so if we can get the new entrance moved to the top of priority list, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Melissa Watson. Followed by Jan Benzy.
Hello, my name is Melissa Watson. I have been teaching in Charleston County School District my entire career. I have been a teacher in your district for 17 years. I am National Certified. I renewed my certification, and I have 60-plus hours over my Masters degree. In fact, I'm just short of writing my dissertation to earn my doctorate. I did not come here to you today lightly. I've never come before your board today, so there's a sense of urgency today, because as a teacher at West Ashley High School, we're having some issues that I hope you will come and address. Due to the very public nature of this, of this meeting, I do not want to discuss those issues here. Due to the very public nature of this meeting, I do not want to discuss those issues here, but I'm inviting you all to come over to our school and have an in-depth conversation with our stakeholders, our parents, and our staff about those various issues. Some of those issues include inconsistent policies, the lack of policies, lack of direction, and teach them around. So I am hoping today that I can get a commitment. Two minutes is not a long time to discuss these things, so I have prepared a report for you, and I will email it to you all individually, but I'm hoping today that this will be the beginning of a process, because I think it's critical and it's urgent that we put some of these issues to bed today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a commitment that we will follow up?
Yes.
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 Next, we have Brendan Brown. I do apologize, I skipped over it.
Ms. Brown's coming up. I mean, just so people know who are here, all of the information that you give us, we don't respond individually, but staff are taking notes, and we will follow up on each issue.
That's okay. Good evening. I'm here to give my support to Turning Point Academy. My grandson has ADHD and suffers from anxiety. In fifth grade, he was an A/B honor roll student, and we had no major behavioral problems. During the summer before sixth grade, his anxieties began to show up more. He was very anxious about going to middle school. The first few weeks of sixth grade, he did okay, but his current difficulty surfaced more. After getting into trouble several times, he was referred to Turning Point Academy. The teachers were very kind to him, and with the classroom number small, they were able to address his problems. In the beginning, they discovered that he did better if he was slightly isolated from the other kids. They let him sit in a corner by himself, and he began to flourish. We began to see the confidence in him return, not only at school where he was having success, but also at home. The thirty days he was there was just what he needed. The past three months of school have been very good, and I credit Turning Point Academy and its wonderful teachers. My grandson now looks forward to school in seventh grade. In conclusion, I would like to say that I believe Turning Point Academy is a great program for those children who need a little extra guidance and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jan Menzie, Patricia Fordham, Jenny Garris, and then Kofasadi.
Good evening. My name is Jan Menzie, and I'm here regarding an appeal for my son. I hope you have a letter. I just thought it was important for me to come in person, as well as you all having the letter. My son is autistic, he, along with other ADHD and intermittent explosive disorder. The school that he is zoned for, I have visited that school twice, and it is not the right environment for him. I am requesting that he go to Camp Road Middle School. This is where, I've met with that teacher, I've looked at that program, and that is where I know that he would thrive. I do not need my son to revert back to the behavior that he had before, of throwing chairs around the classroom, leaving the school in an ambulance, because it's too dangerous for me to drive him. I don't need to go back there again, and that's exactly what would happen in the setting that he would be in the school that he's supposed to be going to. This is an important issue. I know what's best for my son, I just, and I know where he would fit best, and I just hope you can help me out on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have your information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jenny Garris.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I appreciate your time and education you put into making CCSD schools the best they can be. Southbury Elementary School is a top one school in Massachusetts. Fifty percent of their kindergarten and trust grade students were reading below benchmark. They have tried many different approaches to improve reading, but have little success. They decided to develop a literacy plan, which included the Wilson Reading System, an evidence-based reading and spelling program, which is rooted in Orton-Gillingham principles. The school taught the Wilson curriculum with fidelity. Teachers and reading specialists were fully trained in Wilson. They were given implementation support. They were checked regularly to ensure accuracy, and school-based coaches were provided to assist teachers. After two years of implementing the literacy plan, eighty-two percent of kindergarteners were meeting or above benchmark, and eighty-three percent of first graders were meeting or above benchmark. That's a sixty-four percent increase for kindergarten, and a hundred and twelve percent increase for first grade. I would love to see these members in Charleston County, as I know you would too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Kofasadi, coming back with dyslexia. So last time we were here, you wanted to know about results, seeing results in the district in terms of some of these programs. So I'm very excited to report, my son just, it's just about my son right now, but it is, he went from, during his math testing in his math, so before during math, math testing, you had to, you weren't allowed to read the test with child dyslexia. So a child dyslexia really could not accurately be tested on their math. You all were amazing, and changed that role for children with dyslexia. My son went from the third percentile in math in January, to his last math score was a sixty-third percentile nationally in math. So that is what, when you guys are making these changes in your policies, and these changes for our children, that is what you're doing. My son soared. I mean, to tell my kid that, oh my gosh, you're not the third percentile in the nation now, you're the sixty-third percentile. I mean, above average, I'm very, very proud of him. So, thank you very much for your work. Please, keep the dyslexia in the budget to help those dyslexic children, we really appreciate it. It's working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fordham? Patience Fordham?
Hi there. I'm Mary Leary, speaking on behalf of Patience, who's been feeling sick. So I'm just gonna read this through. My name is Patience Fordham. I'm a student at North Charleston High, a school that's typically associated with poverty, low test scores, and school-based arrests. I often see teachers and administrators respond to problems that come up in the school, like arguments, skipping class, cursing, and fights, with suspensions, expulsions, and arrests. That approach doesn't seem to be solving anything. By harshly punishing students, rather than finding out what support they need, or providing them with opportunities to learn, my school is robbing students of their education. A more effective way to address issues that come up at school would be to incorporate restorative circles in the classroom. I learned about restorative circles through my work with the Carolina Youth Action Project, an organization for girls and trans youth in Charleston. After seeing what they can do, I went to the Restorative Justice Forum hosted by the district on Cajun last March. In a circle led by a few administrators, most of the students ended up feeling anxious and frustrated, because we didn't feel like we knew each other, and that our ideas, and we felt our ideas were being dismissed. Instead of giving up, though, we asked to do a second circle to work through our concerns. We all calmed down as we continued to talk, and were able to get to the root cause of the issue. If we could bring circles into more schools, we could get to the root cause of the issues facing, that students face, and actually address the problems that so desperately need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes our comments.
Thanks, everybody. Did we get everybody for public comment? All right, thank you very much for that, we appreciate it. And as I said, staff is taking notes, and a couple of you have some real specific questions, and we'll be following up with you on those items. The next item on our agenda is item 4A, Policy and Personnel Committee, it's A1, Policy BDE. This is first reading of Policy BDE that came from Committee of the Whole. Madam Chair, it incorporates the changes that we're discussing, but it's not Committee of the Whole, and there are no other changes from first reading. Okay, so do I have a motion? And that'd be a motion to approve. Okay, so I have a motion from Ms. Coates, and a second from Mr. Garrett. Everybody has that in their pocket. Pretty much explains what the changes are. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Right, Reverend Collins?
Yeah. The section BD dealing with the liaison. That the board members will seek approval from the liaison to add an item to the agenda. Would you care to elaborate? Madam Chair, the purpose of why board members would need approval from a liaison to add an item to the agenda?
Well, I would respond, I would answer that, I think Priscilla's had a good answer to that, in that for some of those portions of the committee, they plan out their agenda for, she and Cindy have planned out SEC's agenda for most of the year, and the liaison role is to ensure that the items on the agenda are relevant to what we're talking about. So that's just why, why I think it's there. We modeled that policy on the Greenville Board, these changes, make a few changes from that, but I think it's to make sure that we're being efficient in the work that we're doing.
I want to challenge the intent of the policy. In my understanding, that the liaison is put in place primarily to prevent me, myself, and other African-American board members from placing items on the agenda, that people put a layer in place to prevent board members from representing the wishes of their constituents. And if we have to advise, and even if I seek approval from another board member, myself, put an item on the agenda, well, when I already have three supporters, that's an issue for me. That's somebody that's trying to shut me down, and serving my constituents. I remember, I remember a couple years ago, three years ago, I was trying to get HERSI on the agenda, and to get it resolved, and the students in the community all have a chance to go to HERSI Elementary School. And I had Dickens fighting, fighting, trying to get it situated, and the policy came up, that I can no longer just present my constituents' concerns on the agenda. And so this policy says, actually, the liaison has to approve my item, what would be on the agenda, and it just happened to be the liaisons, they don't agree with me, they don't agree with my constituents, and they don't represent the people that I represent. So what I'm saying in a nutshell is this, we cannot have policies that target board members, nor discriminate against people, nor have adversity to people, to board members, because they cannot serve effectively. I'm elected by the party to serve the people, and this policy starts with conserving my people. And I state that is the cause, and send it back to committee, and not have any policy that requires a board member to approve something else, someone's ideas. I can't approve, I don't have authority to approve Todd's ideas, or other five names. You should have authority to approve mine for SEC or anything else.
Well, he's not the liaison for SEC. So, all right, so to your point, though, in this policy, these changes to the policy, I think give a mechanism, so that if, for whatever reason, the liaison doesn't approve it, you have an out to go to the Committee of the Whole chair. I don't, I totally take issue, which I said, you know, with you saying that this is targeted or discriminating, that's not the case at all.
Yeah, maybe for this.
Let me finish. And if, and if we go back and look at agendas and meetings, we've talked about HERSI a bajillion times.
Many more before you ever came on.
Right.
We talked about it for a lot of time.
Sixty times in one year. And recently, we talked, you had some issues about, that you wanted to talk about at Dunston, and you, we had that on two different agendas, and I personally thought, I don't know, we need to talk about that, but you wanted to, so it got on the agenda. So I hear what you're saying.
But the issue was, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get on.
Can I say something? Yeah, hold on, yeah. Right.
The point I'm making, I'm almost finished here. The point I'm making is that, we don't empower one board member over another board member. We don't empower black board members over white board members, nor white board members over black board members. The committees I'm interested in are the liaisons or Caucasian, I can't change that fact, but they don't agree with me on anything.
You should be interested in all of the committees.
Well.
I'm sorry, one.
On policy, on the finance, strategic education, but Michael and I have formed SEC Strategic Education Committee, and so, this was about two weeks ago, I could, I actually pursued to put Farison on the agenda. He had concerns, but Farison, that was true. I wrote her twice, she wouldn't respond, she's not on the agenda. She shouldn't have power to stop people from representing their constituents, and I'm gonna stop you.
Okay, so Cindy, and then Priscilla.
So, just to be clear, that's not a change.
The policy, we can begin with.
The policy that said the liaison had to be one of the three members of an item going on a committee was approved in 2016, prior to the term of any liaison you're referencing now. And I too have seen your vaguely threatening communications, and I am wondering why you're not concerned about Michael, or the other male liaison, your concern strictly goes to.
SEC policy and finances.
Right.
And impacting classrooms.
And finally, I wrote this to remove the liaison.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. I wrote this, and when I wrote it, it said any four members could put any item on any committee agenda, and at Committee of the Whole, the board that is before us changed that. This, I too had removed that.
But the four board members agreed.
And finally, you still have, we all still have, that if there is anything that a board member wants on a committee agenda, that cannot get it on a committee agenda for the last thirteen years, four board members have been able to put anything directly to the board agenda. So I agree. I want, I, I was the person that wrote the policy that removed the liaison, and said, because there's nine members on the Committee of the Whole, let's make it the same as the board meeting.
You didn't remove the liaison, Ms. Coates.
In her proposal, she did change it during the committee vote, but let her finish.
I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here.
She didn't remove the liaison, right here and back and forth.
Right, I'm not gonna sit here and debate you. The policy that is in your thing from the Committee of the Whole meeting prior to the board's changing, it's public record, and it can be released. I agree with you, but the majority of the board didn't, and so I say we would exercise the four board members can take anything directly to the board.
Right, Priscilla?
Well, thing is, I'm being personally attacked here, I'm not even gonna deal with that, but what I am gonna say is that I thought that policies are about policies, and so it's not what I think about somebody, or somebody else thinks about something, it's a policy on how we conduct ourselves as board members. Board members will come and go, so a policy can't be personal, in my opinion. It's about conditions, not about people, and I have nothing against anyone who serves on the board, nor do I do the things that I was just accused of.
Thank you, and I just want to clarify, oh, I'm sorry, Todd.
It's called a question.
Just want to clarify the issue about Farison, because Ms. Grant spoke, and the, a couple people emailed from Farison, there are a number of different groups who are working on John Ziland, Ms. Ann Rosen and team are working with them, and they're wanting to have a meeting as a whole group to address those issues, so. Reverend Mack, are you in that? Yeah.
I'm aware of that.
Yes. So that, that was followed up with, I talked to.
I have one more thing, Debbie Case.
Yeah.
Cindy and Reverend Mack and I went to Farison, and that was people out there several weeks ago, in addition to what is coming up next.
Right, and I've talked to Audrey a couple of times, so they've got a couple of groups that need to meet together, so. Okay, so.
And just for clarification, I just emailed all of you, the Committee of the Whole proposal I sent on May 7th, that shows that Reverend Collins is.
Right, the original, the original.
Call the question.
Okay, call the question. So Mr. Garrett's called a question. The original proposal that Cindy did, it said, had a.
I don't think she's on either.
Okay.
We didn't get a woman's chance to speak.
Okay, we call the question.
Yeah, can I, we can vote over?
Yeah, the supermajority can have a little call the question.
No, I didn't want to.
Go ahead, sir. I didn't turn this.
Yeah, give me a quick second. I have obviously other concerns about the Policy BDEs, but I wanted to just briefly touch on something Reverend Collins said. I, I don't always play well with others, and so.
No.
I, let me back up. When we started to look at reviewing how Greenville County conducts their board meetings, at that time, I personally felt that the Committee of the Whole structure was centered around one person on this board. I felt it was centered around Reverend Collins. I felt that board members felt that Reverend Collins, and I don't wanna, but since we're here, I think we need to be very honest among ourselves. here, I think we need to be very honest among ourselves, I felt that a lot of the board members felt that Reverend Collins would come to meetings unprepared, and he would, his questions would delay meetings, he may ask things that some would consider to be redundant and repetitive and in an attempt, because at the time, we had committees where we all didn't meet up the same day, and each of us were serving usually on two or three committees at a time. So, when we came to a board meeting, for example, Todd would be on Audit Finance, and if I didn't serve on Audit Finance, and the information was already vetted in Audit Finance, I would have some questions because I wasn't on that committee. And so, the committee of the whole, I believe, was created in, in one part to have all of the members on the board serve and hear every information and all the information on every committee at the same time. I think that might not necessarily have been a bad thing. I think because some of us were all over the place as far as serving on different committees. I'd never served on Audit Finance until recently, and then because of the committee of the whole, doesn't have all of us serve on Audit Finance. So, that in itself is a separate kind of committee. But to Reverend Collins's point, I don't, I can never tell him that he doesn't have the right to feel the way he feels. Just because I may not necessarily feel the way he feels 100%, doesn't mean that he may not feel attacked in this scenario, just like when Priscilla, when she chimed in, she said she felt attacked. I can't say that she didn't, or she did or she didn't, she has the right to do that. But I think a much broader point is to Reverend Collins's point is that the nine of us serve, all of the residents and all of the students in Charleston County, there are things that Todd, there are things that will come to Todd's attention that will not come to our attention. And I think Todd, in doing due diligence, if he feels that information is pertinent to the board, I think he would bring it to the board and say, well, there's some issues I've heard about, I think we need to probably have a discussion about that and vet that. Do you guys agree? The way this is typically set up, I think Reverend Collins's point may be, if Todd feels this way, and he's adamant about it, should Todd have the ability, along with one other person, or to send these, which he just sent us, even four of the people, have the right to have the board vet and hear that information, to make sure that we're properly representing all of our constituents? I think Reverend Collins feels slightly attacked, because I think over time, and to Todd's point, when we were doing the Hershey roundabout, Hershey was on the agenda a lot. Reverend Collins had a lot of issues concerning Hershey, whether you agree with his position or not, he had those concerns, we've all had concerns. But does this policy allow us as a board, whether individually, collectively, three or more, four or more, or two or more, allow us to really vet those concerns? I'm a chair, I'm the liaison of a committee, I helped create that committee, be that as it may, I don't feel that I should have the authority to tell Todd and Eric, you shouldn't have something on the agenda, because I may not get your support, or maybe I don't agree with it, or I just don't like you, and so because I don't like you, I'm not going to put it on the agenda. Priscilla's right, policies should not be personal, but they are, and they have been to some degree. I'm not saying that's right, but what I am saying is if Reverend Collins's point is that if one person has the authority, or two people have the authority to not allow information to be vetted by the district, brought to us as information, and then potentially voted on, then what are we doing? I just think that the policy ought to be a little more friendlier when it comes to members of the committee, us, the nine members of the Cal committee, and then members of the board, to be able to bring information forward, in the event that other board members are not pertinent to that same information.
Reverend Mack?
So, let me just say, moving forward, that I want to go back to the Frierson situation and to Reverend Collins, just for information purposes, communication, and I hear what you're saying, but I believe Robin, along with Kathy Middleton and Ms. Ambrose, has been working, I believe, with various groups out on John's Island or in D9, trying to help to bring all the different groups together at one sitting, because you have a pocket of different groups out there that's vetting different ideas and different concerns. And I think, and I think, I believe strongly that, that the goal behind that is bringing key stakeholders to the table and vetting out what is the direction that, that community, that district wants to move forward, and making sure that we capture the consensus of what we're trying to develop out there. So, I don't think anyone's being left out of the equation. I think we're trying to now pull in the different octopus arms that's out there and trying to connect them all together to make sure that, that everyone is on the same page moving forward. I have a pulse on, on what's happening out there, so, so I'm, now, I'm not concerned that, that anything is being left out, but there are a number of different issues that need to be resolved. And I strongly believe that if we allow staff to do the job of bringing whatever ideas that the community have together and vetting those things out.
And then coming to us and saying, okay, board of trustees, this is where we are. We've done the homework, we've done the research, we've looked at the demographics, we've looked at the scope of what's being done, what's being offered, whatever the case may be, and we're moving, we're coming to you, and after talking with the community, the stakeholders, here's where we are. And I think, not think, I strongly believe that's the direction that they are moving in to make sure that we capture just what was said tonight. So, I, I just think that we try to get too much into the weeds of what goes on from day to day as board trustee members. I, I just want to say my piece. And I think that we, we need to let staff, you know, we hired a superintendent to hire staff to do the work moving the district forward. And if we get into the weeds of discussing and telling Jeff, okay, the bathroom needs to be upgraded because the faucet is rusty on the inside, and we should not be getting into those different discussions or into those weeds. Staff is hired to do that work and to report back to us. We are to listen to the community and say, look, these are some of the concerns that are, that are being expressed in our constituent area, and, and our job is to relay that back to the superintendent, who works for us, and the rest of the team, who works for the superintendent. I just think that we get too much into the weeds of what's happening, and we need to allow those things to be directed to the superintendent so that staff can do the work and come back to us, and we vet, and we go through what they present to us, and we do our homework, and we do our research, and if there's concerns, we address those things. Now, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm just saying, as far as your concern about the Frierson situation, I, I believe strongly that Robin and Kathy and Ms. Ambrose have the pulse on moving that forward to make the communication widely spread throughout that area. Nothing personal against you.
Kevin? Or we're.
I'm lost.
We're going, can you just clarify something? We're talking about the policy BDE.
Yeah, I'm lost, man, with that one. I know I'm in timeout, but I was kind of lost in that one. But.
I'll be glad to address any questions you have.
About policy BDE, I think the policy actually needs to not be centered around one individual approving it. Michael tried, I would have to talk long on this. When I first got on this board, it really was gang up on Chris. And I don't agree with Chris all the time, he can tell you, when we talk, we fight back and forth on the phone over issues, but at the end of the day, we kind of meet halfway to where we need to be to kind of move something forward. I wish I had that relationship with Todd and some of the other board members, but we don't. I think we need to be candidly clear. We spend, or we're spending, what, a great amount of money doing diversity study, and this board is freaking divided. We try to do each other in when it comes to how to put an issue on the board, on the table. If we can be truthful about what we're trying to accomplish here, I think we can move further along down the road. We play, we play a very divisive game up here, and we really need to just sit back and look at this again. If I don't agree with Todd on the issue, at the end of the day, Todd and I can sit down and have a cup of coffee and talk it over. We should be able to do that. I have discussions with Cindy about the next, next one to the other side, but Cindy and I don't agree, but we at least we meet once in a while, and we talk issues over. We need to try to make this thing work. A diversity study is going to do a hell of a thing if the board is divided.
Just one thing I, when Michael had the status, I just want to make sure everybody understands, when we did start looking at revising this, the intent was specifically because people who weren't on a certain committee would come to the board, and we'd have to rehash that all again. And Charleston County uses that similar kind of method, they have a committee of the whole, and has absolutely nothing to do with Reverend Collins. So, it was, we, we took the Greenville, you can look at our first draft.
Okay, come on. Be honest, though.
We took, I'm going to be completely candid here.
Not being honest.
You can look back at our very first proposals, and it, they actually came from the Greenville policy.
Some of them.
Nope, you can look back, I'll take you back, got folders full of it. The other thing is Reverend Collins, when we look at, other than what we just brought up about Frierson, which Reverend Mack addressed, I, I can't think of any item that you haven't been able to get on the agenda.
You can't.
So, you've, you've been very successful in getting items on the agenda.
No, I have not.
So, the question's been called, all right? So, we're on item number 4A1, policy BDE, this is just, this is for first reading. Mr. Hollinshead, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
Ms. Jeffrey?
She probably muted the phone.
Priscilla? Ms., I'll come back. Mr. Miller?
Sorry, yes, I was muted.
I figured, we figured you were muted, okay. Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and first reading passes. The next item is 4A2, which is policy FF, naming of facilities.
To approve.
And policy DJBA, revenue enhancing contracts.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Miller and a second from Mr. Garrett.
Madam Chair, there were no changes made coming out of the committee of the whole. The committee voted it out as is.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the naming of facilities and the policy DJBA, which is revenue enhancing contract? Oops, Mr. Staub.
All right, and I'm, I'm probably going to be in the minority here, but I'm just going to state for the record that I don't like the idea of commercialization of the naming of our schools, or our buildings, or our facilities. I'm just concerned that it just sets a bad trend, it can be, you know, you never know what can happen, you get it named after some, a group or a commercial outfit, and, and it could have a negative, negative feedback on all this.
Ask that question, what happens if you name it after entities with some negative publicity happening?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So, what happens if you do have, you know, an entity, they're the highest bidder, we've, we've agreed to a contract for some period of term, and, and then something horrible happens, and, and we do have the commercial fallout of the negative perception of some entity that's done something horrible? I'm trying to think of something that could happen, but let's say one of, one of the airlines decides to name one of our stadiums in North Charleston, and then you hear that they, you know, were discriminatory or something, would we step in and kick them out?
Change the name?
Yeah, do we have some kind of a clause that allows us?
That could be written into the contract, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That would need to be written, even if you're opposed to.
Okay.
I think that needs to be written.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm just stating for the record that I, I do have a fundamental problem with the, doing this type of naming, commercialization.
Okay, I, I mean, I think it would make sense to, to put something in the contract, yeah.
Yeah, there needs to be some kind of.
All right, Mr. Hollinshead, how do you vote? Oh, sorry, sorry, Reverend Collins?
My concern is that, I'm afraid that people will, companies will buy, they're buying their right to get a name on our property, as opposed to making donations, that they're actually really buying that right over other people that are worthy in the community to have a name after them, or those that have worked with children, made very little money, those that have coached sports, those that have served as teachers for 30 years, and someone, some group come in, got lots of money, that would name after you. And what, what if it's an unpopular group or a strange group that wants to name after them, they got lots of money, a strange group that, that impacts children, are we going to name after them too?
My, my guess would be that, that, I mean, this is done throughout the country, and that our attorneys and we'd have a contract attorney look at that to make sure that we have things in place so that we have, we have say so on it, so.
For something that aren't in place yet?
Kevin?
Kevin spoke.
Yeah, I'm going to nod, but the district has to get to a point where we start looking at other revenue streams, or broaden our income, we're going to have to be able to, you know, we're always going from militant increase to militant increase, we don't come up with creative ideas to kind of set, set the deficit off. This is the beginning to try to step to do that, and to get the, get the district to work on some other projects that can generate income into the district. So, therefore, I think our staff is bright enough to know what to enter into an obligation, what to bring for the board, the final say comes to the board. I think the board is intelligent enough to figure that one out through with the attorney, and that's that. So, with that, Madam Chair, I call for the motion, I mean, for the motion, and I.
All right, Ms. Todd Pressway?
I'm saying, just a, I certainly heard what you said, just a friendly amendment, we don't have a deficit, but I understand what you were saying, offset the, the responsibility of taxpayers to fund everything, but just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Chris, are you, are you against policy A2?
All right, so.
A2A, or just, can we just think that one?
They're just talking about themselves.
All right, so we're, we're voting on both. Policy FF.
That's, that's what I, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, we're doing them both together.
I was asking Staub.
Like they came out of Cal together.
Right, was he opposed to one or both? That's what I was asking.
And, I mean, I just know when my children were in high school, we would go to other
high schools, and there, there was a lot of, there were some donations, but there was a lot of sponsorships that helped support those schools.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Hollinshead voted yes. Ms. Coats?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Sorry, yes.
That's okay. Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Staub?
I'm going to vote no.
Call the motion, I don't want to get a vote.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. The next item.
I'm moved to approve the second reading of the proposed 2018-19 budget.
Second, all right, so Todd has made a motion, and Reverend Mack has seconded to approve the second reading of the 2019 budget. Does any, we were kind of in the middle of asking Mr. Kennedy questions, does anybody have any questions that they need followed up on?
I still have a few.
I still have a few?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, can I go real quick, Reverend Collins?
Yeah.
Go real quick.
I just simply wanted to ask about the, the recommendation, or the potential recommendation from the diversity study?
Okay, yeah.
And have they submitted any potential requests from us that have a budgetary impact? And if they have, is that in this reading? And if they haven't, are there going to be provisions within this budget to accommodate any recommendations that they may have bringing to us coming forward?
Doc Pressway, you want to address that or Don?
I met with them preliminarily this morning, because you submitted that question, and the recommendations will be ready in June, but the, from the conversation this morning, I don't believe there's anything that they're going to recommend that we don't have the capacity to get started on in a very significant way right away, with either, either the recommendations don't require additional resources, they require re-appropriating existing, existing resources, or there are ways that we can come, come back to the board within the current budget and ask for certain kinds of expenditures. If, for example, if we needed, one of the things we discussed was scenario planning. So, very clearly, there are some changes that need to be made, we need to lay out with community leaders options. Could you, would you prefer to do this by option A, option B, or option C? We can handle that sort of commitment within the current budget, I believe, based on what I understood this morning. Mr. Kennedy may have had us.
No, I, I agree, so I, I think within the current budget, given our, our resources, we can certainly respond to any recommendations that may come up from the Clemson study, at least on a preliminary basis, so it depends, again, again, on the, the magnitude of the recommendations, but certainly, I don't see any reason we could not get started.
Okay, Reverend Collins?
Item number 233.
Two, item number 233 in the book, what page?
Page 17.
Page 17?
We can just, we can just briefly, tell what that is.
So I do not have the details, Reverend Collins, on Function 233, School Office?
It's 37 million, 815,000.
So what we, I don't, I don't see that in the list of questions that I received last week from my board members. So I did not go through, getting up those details. Do you guys have a response on that?
Whose budget is that? Whose budget, where it comes from?
Which number?
233.
233 is the support of the office in each of the schools. As the president, the assistant president, the day clerk, and all the, all the people who supply the.
The school office in each school.
So you're telling me that includes principal salaries?
Yes.
Okay, so, so let me ask you, which department does that fall underneath? Whose budget?
You're looking at by function. If you were to look at the by school, it'd be broken out into the schools.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but that didn't help me with what I'm trying to do though.
Yeah, that's a function, so it's all of them.
Let me talk a little bit about the structure of the budget and some of the challenges in being able to respond to specific questions just tonight.
And I understand too, and I understand you don't have all favorably compared to that, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can just skip that for a minute.
Okay.
263.
Are you still in the function, or are you going to the individual school budgets?
I'm on the expenditures on page 17.
Oh, function, okay, that's the consolidated.
Yeah, mine is instructional services.
That's in all the schools.
Information services.
3, Information Services.
2 million, 344,000.
So without going through, getting into the details, because I don't have the details tonight, I would assume, and the finance staff can confirm this, that this would be the technology services that we provide to the district. And again, I would like to maybe to explain where I am with this, Reverend Collins, and to the school board members. So I had staff take a look at the structure of the budget, of the budget. And so the function then takes a look at the activities that we're funding. So for instance, you have a function, Instructional Services 113 would be all of the elementary classroom-type activities. 252 would be the Finance Department. 255 would be the Transportation Department. So that's one structure of the budget. The second layer would be the objects. So within each function, there could be a number of objects. And those objects then, which are in the book here, those objects talk about the type of expenditure. So in the classroom, in each function in the classroom, there are salaries, there are supplies and materials, equipment. Within transportation, as an example, there are, again, salaries, there would be maintenance for school buses. And then each location then, going back to your 233, the 37.5 million dollars. We have 80 something schools, so each school would have a location. And those functions and those objects would be broken out by those locations. So when we tally all of that up, there are like 12,625 individual unique line items in the general operating budget. And then we'll take a look at the entire budget, all the special revenue. That number goes up to over 30,000 individual, unique line items. So in order for me to be able to provide specific responses to board members' requests and requests for information, then if I have that information upfront in advance, we can have staff research and provide the specifics. And so with that volume though, I'm not able to respond to specific ones tonight unless I would receive advanced requests, unless we have the information.
I understand, you will. And where is that, that book has all the line item details in it, where is that book at?
It is, it's not in the book, it's in the computer system.
Where do I access it at?
You do not, sir. So it's in the computer system. And so if you wanted to take a look, I'm not, if you would like, if you would like to know, for instance, a specific location, a specific school, and you want to know all the details about that school, then I would have to have staff go in and do a electronic query to pull that data out and provide that to you. So we don't have a book that lays all of that out. Again, you were talking about 30,000 different, unique line items.
Yeah, at least that many. So my thoughts were that, and maybe I'm wrong, I always thought that that each line was supposed to be detailed and made public knowledge, but maybe I'm wrong in what I'm thinking. That's what I always thought it, that was the intent, that from the legislature that we'd have each line, line item detailed and anybody could go and research an item and verify that some X amount of dollars are being spent for so and so project.
Well, a budget document then, sir, is a summary, it summarizes all of those unique.
Yes, sir.
And then, then if there's need to get into the specifics, and then we can, we can get the specifics by doing that type of electronic inquiry that I mentioned.
So give me about two minutes, then I'll be done.
Okay.
And I won't eat it all the time. I won't even ask all my questions tonight. When I, when I, what got my attention was on 263 that when it was over 2 million dollars, there was information that I said was the community service figures. We're coming to around, it's like 11 million dollars or so, 12 million dollars. So I said maybe it'll be a part of it, communication, service, community services. But it kind of baffled me, I didn't know where it was, the Information Services. I didn't know whether all the, who runs that department. So, but you don't have to even give it, you don't have to even respond, but I just didn't know what in the world it was.
I understand.
So go to 417.
417.
Are you still doing the function, or are you back in the school locations yet?
Still in the expenditure.
What page?
Page, uh.
It's on page 18, which is.
20, page 20.
Page 20?
No, no, wait, I'm sorry, hold on, back up, back up. They're not quite in order, hold on a minute, wait a minute.
417 is on page 20.
Wait a minute, hold on a minute.
So, but what, just why?
It's 417, it's nonprofits, what it is.
417?
417.
Oh, that's the, that's the.
Some of them are different, they're not in the same order.
No, see that was.
It's gonna find it.
Right, it's because you're looking, you want to be looking at the budget that was written by function, not broken out by object. And that 417 is the function of nonprofits. He's on 18.
Let me see.
And, and, Mr., I mean. Right, so Reverend Collins, that function 417 is one.
Let me ask my question first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alright, you've really got two things there. You've got, you've got 412, payments to other agencies, about a half a million dollars. Then you have payments to nonprofits, 7 billion, 781,000. And so my question is, who are the, who are those profits, nonprofit organizations? And what are they doing in the district, what do they do for the district? And why are we spending, and thirdly, why are we spending so much money on nonprofits? I know we support nonprofits, but why are we, this is quite a bit of the budget here, nearly 8 million, nearly 8 million dollars. And then at the same time, we give to these nonprofits, we also raise, we raise the millage, the tax of millage in the book, have a budget increase, so.
Let me answer the question.
You've asked it very clearly.
About 3, I think about 3 million dollars or so, 2.5 million or so then, on the GOF side, with 3.98 mils, 3.93 mils. So anyway, so that's what I want to, so if you can ask, kind of tell us with the nonprofits.
So on the.
And the other.
So specifically to function 417 on page 18, that was one of the, one of the questions we did receive. And that, that 7.4, 7.5 million dollars in function 417 out of the General Operating Fund, they're direct payments to Meeting Street at Brentwood and includes Brentwood students and Burns students that are at Meeting Street. So the function description doesn't describe that, you know, the narrative, the words, but the, in the system, that's what that is. The payments to Brentwood, excuse me, Meeting Street for the Brentwood and Burns students that attend Meeting Street.
So that's, that's the 3 million, we talked about the Committee of the Whole, that 3 million dollars going, that 3 plus million going to Meeting Street? Is the, this is the grand total going to Meeting Street?
So if you were to take a look at, and think in the responses that I provide to the board, it breaks that out.
It does.
Brentwood students, 4.3, and then the Burns students, 3.2 million. So those are the students that, from those two schools that attend Meeting, Meeting Street.
I yield to someone else.
Alright, does anybody else have a question? Cindy?
Ms. Coates?
So of that page 18, the 417 line, how much of that is school operations, excuse me, school ops money?
417?
When you say school operations?
Right, so there's a, I mean, it's an inelegant wording to say it's to nonprofits. Is it to, is it to the budget of the school, or is it to the nonprofits?
I'm sorry, I understand. So it's to the budget of the school. So when we meet with the school administrators, we take a look at the actual number of students that are attending and their different characteristics, and we allocate based on, based on the agreements that we have.
So then, under the location, is their school listed as a location?
What number? What, 439? 439, yeah.
That correlates to the, so when you look at it by the location, you see that that's a function of the money, but the location is being spent is to operate the school.
That's right. And so that's, I mean, location 439 on page 25 of the book.
Right, because I think it works better if you look at the locations, because that's what we're funding. So.
What number's the location?
439 on, it's under the location budget though, you won't find it under functions.
Further back into the book.
Yeah.
Page 25.
We, like.
Page 25.
X number of dollars for Styles Point, right below that, X number of dollars for Murray-Lacine. That's where it's, but the school budgets. So then, I guess my question is, I, we have, we have sold bonds, I'm sorry, Jeff, this is probably more for you, but we've sold bonds ever since we started the one cent sales tax, but we have never sold bonds to pay back with a tax increase. We've always sold bonds to pay back with future revenue of the one cent sales tax. So I have some concerns about increasing taxes to pay back the bonds we're selling on these projects that I, I'm just, I just don't get this. I don't know, we have a $500 million anticipated income on capital projects, and I'm not sure we need to be raising taxes to fund capital projects.
Yeah, I've just got a comment on that.
Todd?
We, with the absent sales tax, we can pay for anything on the list of the absent sales tax. That is, part of that can be used for fixed cost of ownership. You know, we've always done fixed cost of ownership out of our 8% bond money and that, you know, once we paid down the debt that was run up from 2005 to 2009, which will, over the next 12 years will be completely paid off.
That's paying down debt, I'm talking about paying out the sale of the bonds.
We'll still be paying for fixed cost of ownership of operation. And any money, we've got that 8% bond money that we can approve. Any money we approve on that, like the land for the stadium, has to come with millage increases to be able to pay for it long-term.
Well, in some, I just think it's, I think maybe it's a longer conversation I was prepared to have. We have a $30 million line item for the purchase and construction of a second high school in East Cooper. It is on the one cent sales tax. We could spend that money to purchase land for a second high school in East Cooper. And if we didn't have a renovation or expansion of a school on there, I would be concerned about why that, why it's not on the list if it's a necessity. I mean, we can, we can consider that the 14.2 for the D4 stadium was an underestimation maybe, but we have $30 million, I mean, I pulled it up, I didn't want to get this wrong, for the purchase and construction of a second high school. So we have money, we have it on the referendum. I don't, I'm a little concerned about using non-referendum money to pay for this. But.
To pay for what? To pay for the?
Purchase.
Of the land?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You're talking about the land in Alwindah, Cindy?
We're raising taxes to buy the land in Alwindah. We're not using the one cent sales tax to buy the land in Alwindah.
But you have a problem with the D4 ish part of it too?
It's a $528 million list with an expected revenue of $500 million. I don't know how we don't know we're not going to have any savings.
Well, I mean, I think we will have savings, but we'll also have increased expenses too in other areas, so.
Again, capital projects, I agree. This cannot maintain, this cannot maintain, and we do have the, you know, we have to be very clear. Capital projects don't maintain the projects we build. And the FCO, we did build FCO into the sales tax referendum in 2014. Some, not enough. Right.
Madam Chair, if I could make just a couple of comments to hopefully address what Mrs. Coates has brought up. If you recall, we have had increases in the last two projects that we've awarded. Stono Park and Burns Elementary School. And we sought approval from the board to increase the funding levels to support those projects. We are opening four more projects in June and July. Our expectation is we're going to have to come back to you and request additional funds that are, as you mentioned, above what we expected to pay for with projected revenues that we haven't allocated yet. So I expect that we're going to continue to see that. And so those revenues that haven't been allocated to projects are going to be used for future construction. I would hate to pull that money away now in lieu of canceling a project that has been approved already down the road. Second point I wanted to make related to the capital, capital maintenance. Ron had conducted a facilities assessment several years ago. That showed a need of $37 million per year for capital maintenance. We've allocated between 15 and 20 per year under the sales tax program. You're correct, we are putting money into that program. The $10 million that we've added brings us closer to that $37 million shortfall each year to overhaul all those systems of the facilities that were installed in the first two building programs.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So does that address your question, Cindy? Okay. Anybody, yep, Kevin, I'm sorry.
One last one.
Mr. Kennedy? How does the TIF affect our overall financial status or the increase that was going forward? If we didn't have the TIF, how would we be?
So if we didn't have the TIF for the millage increase that we are proposing at 3.96, I think that number would be additional 1.3, 1.4 million dollars additional revenue that we, that we would be bringing in.
It would be left there.
So it's 1.3 million dollars less revenue that we will receive because of the TIF.
About a half a million, they're multiple because we don't want to sell bonds.
Reverend Collins has one more question?
Yes, so on page 25, 0439, the Leadership Academy, North Charleston, is that Meeting Street?
I'm sorry, what's the number, Reverend Collins?
0439 on page 25.
Under location, so location budget.
That is Meeting Street, yes, sir.
So Meeting Street is called Leadership Academy, North Charleston?
So I think, in a couple of instances here, the, again, like I said, the description doesn't, in the book doesn't reflect what the, what the actual school is, location, and that's, this is one of those instances here.
Will that be changed when it's posted on the district website?
Yes, so we've, we've made those, we've actually posted this afternoon an updated version of the budget document.
Right.
As a revision, and it includes several pages changing those names to reflect.
So my question is that on the, in 417, when you said the nonprofit is Meeting Street for 7 million, 781,000, but here with 04339 in the leadership is 8 million, 571,000 dollars?
Non-GOF added to it.
There's food service added to it.
Right, it's the food.
It just seems like a lot of money to put into one school, by my calculations.
But it's two schools, it's Meeting Street, Brentwood, and Burns. And if, we would be, those kids are our kids, so we would be paying that, it just would show up in a different place.
Doesn't Burns should operate next year?
Some, right.
It's not Burns.
It is, it is coupled, it's a greater.
I think Burns fully goes into the next year, is that right?
No, it's not right.
So Dr. Postaway, clarify, because I was confused by this. That Brentwood and Meeting and Burns.
Following year.
Brentwood picks up one grade level of students per year from Burns. So Burns steadily diminishes, I believe, 3, 4, and 5 are at Burns next year. The following year will be 4 and 5. And at that point, we need to decide whether, how we.
For Burns.
For next year, it's 3, 4, and 5, whereas all the rest of the kids are, Burns students will be served at, we, pardon me. For next year, it's three, four, and five, whereas, uh, all the rest of the kids are, uh, Burns students will be served at Meeting Street.
But Burns has a, Burns has its own principal, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because Mr. Collins is principal at, at Burns, so, so it shows not what you say, it's two separate schools.
Right, but, but the Burn, but as she said, half of the Burns kids are now covered in this budget, so I mean, we would be paying for those kids anyway.
We'll get an update on the information.
They're our kids.
Yeah, right, right, not you, I'm with Kate, not you, I'm saying Kate.
Right, but those are, those, whether we're serving them through Meeting Street or we're serving them at Burns, I mean, we, the money might show up in a different place, it's still spending the same amount of money.
It is two schools, but they're divided sort of like one and a half.
Right, 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 that's what I'm telling Kate, it's two schools, right.
Right, okay, what other questions?
I'm gonna stop here, they're not prepared, uh, 'cause I didn't answer the questions at early, I understand that, so, uh, I'll stop here.
I mean, a lot of people did submit a lot of questions, and you did, too, and there's a lot of answers.
I didn't send none in.
Yeah, well, a lot of them, they're answered right here.
I have them right here, I have them.
And one thing, too, I just want to make sure you know, once the budget, whatever the budget is approved, you can go on the website and look at past year's budget and look at exactly, you know, each school per pupil, plus you can go on and see those transparency reports and see exactly how we're spending money.
Right, that, that's what I want to do, to have the entire thing on, on the website.
It's on there.
Know that the, the, per budget, per department, and per line, everything.
Go back there and look, it's, it's on there.
He said it's not on there, Kate.
Well, it's not on there now, because the amount.
Not a budget until we approve it.
We've approved it, it go, they'll, they updated it.
It's not a budget until the board votes.
I call a question.
Well, anybody else have questions, okay? Mr. Stobbs is in the back, all right? Hold on, let me put this over. Okay, um, so for the second reading of the FY nineteen budget, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote? Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Uh, reluctantly, I vote no.
Uh, Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Miller?
No.
Uh, Reverend Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbs? Uh, I vote yes, so, one, two, three. So as soon as Mr. Stobbs comes in here, he can tell us what his vote is, but my, the vote passes. The budget passes, so thanks, everybody, for your great work on the budget, we know it was a phenomenal amount of time and work.
Yeah, well, it is a lot of work. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, even though I voted no, not because you didn't do a good job, I voted no for other reasons.
I understand, sir, thank you.
Okay, then next.
Particularly, thank you for the time and given that this really started around January first this year, so, yep.
I think what's different this year is we have over thirty-five pages of, of explanations that we've never had before, budget vote before. That's, that's what Mr. Kennedy's done different. I counted them out, I went to print them, and that was just too dang much, so I just counted them out, there were thirty-five pages of answers.
I move to approve the Laura Brown funding distribution.
Second.
Wait a second.
Yep, so we have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a motion from Mr. Garrett and a second from.
Reverend Collins.
Or from Reverend Collins, sorry.
What's the motion?
To approve the Laura Brown funding.
To approve the Laura Brown funding, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, then, um, Mr. Hollenshed? Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Uh, Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, I think for.
Yep, we need to.
For clarity, we need Mr. Stobbs to cast a vote, or it wouldn't count as a vote.
That's all.
When we leave, right, so.
Right, it's not gonna count, so if somebody wants to go and get his head, stick his head back in.
He is gonna vote on the budget.
Well, then, he should.
He has to cast his vote, I think, before we would move away from the.
So somebody go get him, please.
Madam Chair, while we're doing that, can we entertain, as we go into item number five, that we maybe take a two to three minute, uh, break to allow Dr. Bridges to kind of assemble and, and.
Which item?
Number five.
Dr. Bridges is next, our next item.
The next item.
Okay, so.
You mean the textbook?
No.
No, 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 no.
Item number five on your agenda.
Hold on, so what we're gonna do is let everybody take a personal, quick, two-minute, we can fight over the bathroom, and let Dr. Bridges, um, get set up, is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
And then, hopefully, Mr. Stobbs will be back here. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
As, as we're breaking, could, uh, could I just, um, take a moment to thank the board for your support of the budget, and to thank the staff, and all of the principals, teachers, and support staff who worked really hard to put this budget together. We have three major strategic priorities, um, Mr. Kennedy spelled them out, and we've tried to design the budget around those priorities. We appreciate the board members helping clarify what, what our, our strategic initiatives are moving forward, and all the work that's been done to try to make sure that we move resources intentionally, purposefully toward those resources, and with Mr., uh, with Dr. Bridges' report, uh, we're going to look, uh, at the, at the recommendation for how we evaluate the extent to which we are accomplishing what we said we wanted to accomplish and what this budget puts resources towards, so I, I cannot thank the finance team who led us through this effort enough, those who've been here a long time. And the board members who spent hours and hours on this and submitted excellent questions to help us improve, uh, the document and refine our intents and our, uh, targeted, targeting resources toward those intents. Uh, it, it really has been a pleasure working on that this year, and all the teachers and, uh, principal, support staff, uh, for the time they've put in, this is a month to appreciate teachers, so we, on behalf of, of everyone here, we want to make sure that we give a shout out to the, the incredible work that teachers do every day, and the results we're seeing for kids are, are beginning to show, um, a difference for some kids who haven't learned at high levels before, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, all right, we have three minutes, so.
You put the ticker on?
Ticker.
Andy, go put the ticker on.
I don't have the ticker out. All right, so we are back in session after our three-minute break that turned.
Three-minute break?
Out to be a little bit longer than three minutes, so, thanks, everybody, so.
Just gonna cast this vote? Yeah, I, I will cast my vote yes for the budget because I support our teachers.
Good for you, and do you want to cast your vote on the Laura Brown funds, too, we voted on that next, but after that.
Aye. Let me review it quick, I looked at it this weekend, but.
It passed, so, okay, Priscilla, you're there, and.
I am.
Okay, um, Reverend Mack, should I pass it on to you to?
Sure, thank you.
Introduce our next topic?
So we have with us today, uh, Dr. Randy Bridges, who's here with us today, have been working along with us in trying to help develop a tool for, uh, the, the next, uh, or the next process of evaluating, uh, the superintendent with this evaluation tool. Uh, the number of board members have, uh, submitted over the course of, uh, several meetings that we've had with Dr. Bridges, and Dr. Bridges have collectively, uh, gathered, uh, the inputs that have been shared with board members, and have, uh, of, of course, uh, reviewed and studied our strategic plan that has put, put in place, and so today, we are, we're coming forward to look at all of that information that has been put together in hopes of today, uh, of identifying a tool that will be used to, uh, that will be used for the superintendent evaluation. Now, I, I would like to add that this tool that we're talking about today in hopes of, of adopting is to, is to begin in July of twenty nineteen. And, uh, and at, at some point, uh, if we decide, uh, or through some other discussion, wants to do something different or earlier, then that's had it, but I just want to be clear that, that we're looking at, uh, July twenty nineteen of this tool being adopted. So having said all of that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have a tool for this year?
Say again.
Do we have a tool for this year? This year.
Well, you know, we do have.
Same one as last year.
What's been in, already in place, uh, so, but once we, uh, adopt this, uh, for twenty nineteen, if we so desire with, with the input of the superintendent to want to use this tool for this year, then, then so be it. But if not, then we will use the tool that, that's, that's currently in place right now.
So this could count for this year.
It could count for this year, uh, but let me put the caveat that as we're developing this, we want to also be fair to the superintendent to have an input, uh, to make sure that, that we're all on the same page and that, uh, that we are evaluating on a, on a, on a even level, uh, as well, so, having said that, Dr. Bridges?
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Reverend Mack, thank you for having me back again. Uh, my presentation tonight will be relatively short, because we've had several conversations, and I've gotten a lot of information from both the board and, uh, Dr. Postaway in this process. I always kind of like to start out with, uh, that that you know, which is your, uh, vision and mission statement, speaks to, uh, every child being supported, and, uh, the value of individuals who work in your school district, and the ultimate goal of, uh, the education and support every child in achieving college career and citizenship revenue. I also mentioned to you the last time I was here, and what I'll recommend to you tonight is, uh, a framework that is consistent, uh, in evaluating, uh, the superintendent, and I think, based on the work that you have done as a school board, as community members, uh, staff, parents, in developing your strategic plan, that that is an excellent place to start, uh, in terms of those eight goals that were laid out, um, and I'm using that timeline of twenty seventeen to twenty-two, twenty-two. Uh, but again, I won't read those to you, but you are very familiar with those. I did add two, uh, so really now those goals are up to ten. And the last two were, speak to the superintendent demonstrating, um, ethical behavior and the superintendent demonstrating effective interpersonal skills, and in just a minute, you'll know why I put those on there. I'm sure you've seen this next slide, but I want to show it to you anyway. Uh, those are the nine standards that principals are evaluated on, uh, in the state of South Carolina. And I think if you looked at each one of those individually, and go back to your strategic plan, your mission and your vision, they would align, um, so that consistency of purpose every year when we as superintendent sat down to evaluate our principals was consistent, it was there, uh, and I think that would mirror very well with your, um, strategic plan and your goals. You probably have seen this one as well, North Carolina standard for evaluating teachers, uh, in those four domains, uh, instruction, planning, environment, and professionalism, and you'll notice on all these documents, they don't ever talk specifically about test scores, uh, with the onus being, if you do these things and you do them well, that those should accelerate, that kids should learn at an accelerated rate if you put these pieces together and do them correctly. So I wanted you to see, just from an alignment perspective and a foundation perspective, if you have those goals that are ongoing, there isn't really a secret, uh, each year that we come in for the evaluation of the superintendent, or the evaluation of the principal, or the evaluation of the teacher, um, so those things are ongoing. I, I do want to make a few recommendations to you, and, and, uh, one of them I just did, is that, that you use those strategic plan goals as a foundation for the evaluation, and that it generates an ongoing conversation between the board and the superintendent throughout the course of the school year in terms of where you are in the process. Uh, I listen to your, your budget conversations, and I congratulate you on that, I know it's a long process, but I really can't think of anything that you'd come up with, uh, from a goal perspective, that wouldn't fit in those ten. Anything that you want to talk about, budget, academic performance, achievement, whatever you want to talk about would fit in there. So it doesn't rule out some very specific conversations about goals, but it does set that framework. Uh, those indicators should be used as a guide for the board, obviously, as you're moving forward and you're evaluating the superintendent at the end of the year. I mentioned to you last time that the, there should be indicators, that the goals should be monitored, which I'll explain that during the timeline, um, that the indicators that the district is continuously improving, that we produce data to support those two indicators, and that the board should use the data as a tool to assess a superintendent's performance. I, you know, for a long period of time, as a principal, back in the light years ago, we would start out the beginning of school year and have conversations about what we want our kids to learn, and we kind of forgot about that conversation until we got to the end. And, and you've got to know that that just doesn't work, uh, it has to be an ongoing conversation about things that are going on. So in this process, with the timeline, it kind of pushes you into a position of continuously having these conversations. As you move into the process and you actually start the evaluation process, and I, I listed this just for your information, uh, of course, these conversations initially take place in the executive session, um, and I think it's important that the board come to consensus on what that looks like. And when you're, doesn't mean that everybody has to agree, I don't expect that anywhere I've ever worked, anyway. But come to consensus on, um, on what that final evaluation process and the conversation that you're gonna have with the superintendent should be. The superintendent will be involved in that at the end, and have the opportunity to answer or ask questions or respond to the evaluation, and then the final evaluation will be signed and placed in the superintendent's, uh, personnel file. Timeline, I did ask, ask Dr. Postaway if she could provide you with the summary of the strategic plan. I think last year you may have gotten that document in November, and I asked her, could she possibly provide that to you in June? And she said that she could, um, so I, I think that would be good information for you to have to start in July with step one of the process, which would be that conversation in the executive session about goals for the coming school year. Now, the reason why I said the strategic plan summary before that, going into that conversation, you probably will have greater, a, a great deal of, uh, discussion about the strategic plan, but there may be some other items. I, I don't want to eliminate anything outside that's not completely spelled out in the strategic plan. I, one of the examples I gave Reverend Mack was, and I know you already have this, but just as an example, there is some specific program that you would like to see in all of your middle schools. You've heard about it, you'd like for the superintendent and staff to research that and give us yearly input on, feedback on what that program is and how effective it is. It doesn't take those opportunities away from you because you're the foundations and the goals of the strategic plan, you still have other venues that you can assign goals for the superintendent in that July conversation. After that, when that's agreed upon, uh, the next step would be, in December, you would get an update on the strategic plan and any other goals that have been established by the board, just so you have that ongoing conversation and dialogue about the evaluation. And then, uh, in, 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 in July, and this is a July to July timeline, then there will be a summary of all that information throughout the course of the school year that can be provided, provided to you on the strategic plan and the goals that are agreed upon by the board and superintendent. And then we note that the state results come out October, November, and you would be, you're provided a summary report on that, and I think, uh, Dr. Postaway has worked on some other things, and I've heard you talk about other assessment tools and other ways to measure, rather than waiting until November and October, November to get that results, and I think she and her staff are working on some information that could be provided to you about student achievement in the summer, uh, that would, would, would dovetail with this, uh, with this process. Sorry, get a little bit behind on my, my clicking. So we've had some conversation about rating sheets, and, um, I, I put them back in, changed the wording, to highly effective, effective improvement needed, and ineffective, and, uh, gave a definition of each one of those, uh, for your pleasure. If you choose to, to use the rating system, um, then you can assign the point value to that that you would like to assign to it, if that's something that you would like to do. I wanted to include that as well. Also had some conversations about, you wanted to eliminate the rating system. Well, if you want to do that, it doesn't change the processing at all in terms of the sharing of information and how the strategic plan goes and ongoing goes, all the information remains the same. It boils down to, when that information is submitted to you at the end of the year, a really good conversation between the board and the superintendent about the success of the school year and the performance, uh, and how the board can have that conversation in absence of the superintendent and come to a consensus about the performance. And a statement can be written by the board, uh, about her performance, and that could be. her performance, and that could be submitted to the community and to the media, and it could be done by the chair. But the document itself would be produced by the board. And, and then you would need some policy, a couple of policy adjustments if you're going to go in that route. The July to July timeline will get you in line with the, the contract that the superintendent currently has in place. So that's a, that's a quick run through of some of the things we talked about last time and a few things that I added after having some additional information sent to me from you. And I'll pause right there. And I know Dr. Postaway had put this at your seats. And Drew, if you would speak to that for just a minute, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And Ms. Jeffrey, what Dr. Bridges is referring to is another version of the outcomes we seek document, the indicators document that we and the board have been working on for a few months. It's divided into the three sections that are correlated to the three strategic priorities. The first is, is increasing student achievement or making sure that more students are ready, that we're closing opportunity gaps along the pre-K through 12, inter-career, or college continuum, developing talent, and focusing on equitable distribution of resources. So what we did this time was to back up and start with three and four-year-olds. So we don't know exactly what instrument we should use, but we need to make sure that the measurements that we're using with three and four and five-year-olds are aligned to what first graders are supposed to know. Because right now, at some point in our system, it looks as though all children are doing extremely well and that the next year they fell off the cliff. And that's a, an indicator of a misaligned system of measures. So our readiness measures aren't really measuring those things well enough that students have to be able to do to be successful at, from one level to the next in all instances. So we, we think we have to back up to three and four-year-olds. Then we get to kindergarten, and you'll see mention of the FAST assessment. That's the new early literacy assessment that was selected by our teachers and that schools can voluntarily use this coming year. If, assuming their, the experiences in the volunteer schools are positive, that would be rolled out to all schools the following year. And then we get to third grade, and you begin to just see how this progression works. Last time I shared with you some information about Lexile levels per career. We, that can be broken down into almost any career one can think of, whether it requires additional college beyond high school or whether it requires career certification or intensive training. One interesting thing to me about the Lexile levels when we look at them is the, is the uniform high expectation that's there for virtually any career a young person would choose. So we don't have to worry so much anymore that if you go in this direction toward a trade, you're disassociating yourself from college collegiate opportunities because the expectations for both are extraordinarily high. So if we start at the third grade and use Lexile levels and for reading and quantile levels for mathematics, regardless of what assessment anybody uses, we'll have that measure that can be, can stay constant. So whether South Carolina decides to stick with the current South Carolina assessments or in the next procurement opportunity, go with some other assessment, whether some schools decide to use MAP or some other nationally normed assessment, whether we're looking at how students are scoring on the, the software that we use to help individualize like Lexia or Alex in mathematics, that stays the same. That's the thermometer that tells you, are, are all kids at 98.6? And so we're suggesting that we use Lexiles. Another big advantage of Lexiles and Quantiles is we will know for the majority of our students who have any sort of test score, what their Lexile and Quantile levels are when the school year is out. So it doesn't put it in this situation where we have to wait till the next fall to figure out what it is we need to be doing differently. It allows us to begin planning and aligning resources prior to the start of the next school year. So you'll see that, I just wanted to mention that switch from a particular test to Lexile and Quantiles. And you'll see us following through with that just as, as far as we can, can take it through. When we get to high school, last time Reverend Collins, I think you said there were a whole bunch of things lumped together. So we, that was a, an excellent point. So we separated those out into indicators like dual credit courses, students completing international baccalaureate or AP courses with a grade of C or better. We could, would also want to look at how they're scoring on the AP exam, looking at students who earn the state career certificate, the silver or higher assessment, that's the career readiness, or a score of 31 or higher on the armed services vocational aptitude battery, looking at ACT and the SAT so that we have comparable scores with other districts around the country. So we begin then to draw a picture of this continuity from pre-K through the 12th grade. And we can create for parents and for students and for educators, an understanding of the opportunity gaps, and we can begin to, to target our resources exactly where they need to be targeted. That helps tie together the superintendent's evaluation with the strategic priorities and the budget. And it should tie in with the activities at the, at the principal and teacher level, as Dr. Bridges pointed out. So we get down then to developing talent, and we have some indicators there. The, you may have some different indicators in, in, in mind, but we want to know how many teachers successfully completed their first year with us and are continuing, how we're, we're doing in terms of being able to attract and retain and reward talent. Are our teachers participating in professional development programs that are aligned with the strategic initiatives? And what's the feedback from the teachers about those programs and so forth? How many, the one I like is the last one. How many teacher vacancies do we have when the school year starts? Because every single day you deprive a child of a, of a, of a capable teacher, you're setting children back. In order to make that one work, the district is going to have to have a little bit more control over hiring, because right now it's all up to the schools. We don't have any leverage. So we, we have to make, I think, some policy changes to really get at that one. Not to take any authority away from principals, but to give us some authority to make sure these things are done before people go on vacation, for example, which happens to us sometimes. And then finally, our focus on equity. We're looking at, these could be any indicators for us this year. We know retaining math teachers is a challenge. So we're focusing particularly on math teachers in high poverty schools, because one of our strategic priorities has to do with paying math teachers more to work in high poverty schools. That strategy appears to be working, but once they go, are they staying? Did that work? And then we can look at the impact on, on the student success rates. So Mr. Miller, to your point, the percent of students receiving instruction in the arts, music, and foreign language, that defined minimum program, how close are we coming to the goal of delivering it to everyone? The schools that, where, where teachers are receiving full-time instructional coaching, so that teachers are getting the supports that they need. We look at English language learners who are, are becoming proficient in English. And one really interesting piece of information is that in one of our schools this year, both the valedictorian and salutary in our previous English language learners in our system. So that tells us that, that some aspects of some programs are, are pretty darn effective, pretty impressively effective. And then we look at, at our special needs students who are meeting or exceeding their IEP growth goals. And on the second page are some indicators you haven't seen before. And these have to do with effective operations. We thought that you would also want to look at these kinds of indicators that haven't been explicitly spelled out before in the superintendent's evaluation. So basically, the cabinet and, and I work together to say, of all the things we're responsible for, how do we boil this down to represent what the, the district's cabinet-level leadership team is responsible for affecting? What are the highest leverage activities that we're responsible for that impacts teaching and learning? So that's what you have on the second page. Again, this isn't intended to be final tonight. It's just to give you an example of the kinds of data that we would find very meaningful in terms of being more systemic and purposeful in targeting the students who, who most need our help and ensuring that all students have a, a chance to close the gap between what they want to do and where they are in our system. Bottom line, public school in Charleston County and in my view throughout the nation exists to make sure kids have opportunities when they leave us, that they would not have had it, they not been with us. And that's the, the measure upon which we should judge our success. So that's what we tried to, to capture in this document, and we wanted to share it tonight, not to get bogged down in the conversation, but just to make sure that you understood that through all these words, there is the, the, the intention to be very, very focused and purposeful about our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. And that's a great document that your staff has come up with. And again, would supply the board with a, a lot of information, deep and wide about what's going on in your organization. I'm prepared to put all of this together in terms of the matrix for the evaluation piece, including the last piece that was just shared with you in some regard, and have that back to you for your consideration in terms of the process that you may want to use.
So is there any questions for Dr. Bridges as to how we move or any final recommendation in adopting this tool?
So could you have that recommendation back to us for our June board meeting to take action or?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that feasible? Okay.
Reverend Collins?
Maybe let us see what he has first. Give us, give us time to study it and then make, make him respond to it and then go on it. I, I didn't see the.
Is there anything specific?
With all due respect, Reverend Collins, we've been, he's been presenting to us and we've been seeing it for six months. And it's right here. You don't have to say shh.
I like to, I didn't see the, the MAP, the MAP data. Maybe I looked at it a little bit, I think. MAP and SC Ready.
MAP is for one, grades one through eight. It's in there for each, each of the grades one through eight.
I saw A3s, Spring Quantiles, percent of middle grade students who meet a C1's academic growth.
That's measured by MAP.
Didn't say that. Say Lexile scores. Doesn't say, doesn't say anything about MAP.
Right. So I guess.
The Lexile score, it's not the same thing as MAP, no way.
Right. So the percent.
Wait a minute, send me, wait a minute. You get to turn a minute.
Reverend Collins, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes. I want, I want to, I don't know when it says percent. Who's going to fill that in, the percent, each one of such a percent? Or he's arguing that whatever that percentage is, we know, we, that's, that's what it is. If it's 30% exceeded or 50% didn't exceed, 40%, I kind of like to know what you mean by that. But I'd like to see some, some SC Ready and some MAP defined. And also, and in, for, for high school, for example, the end of, end of course is not for every, it's not every class. I know US, US history is one. And I think MAP, but I'm not sure that I know which one. But I know US history, but I know there's only about three courses in high school that have end-of-course exams. You can tell me, you can tell me, you already know. What, what are those courses have in, what are those subjects have in the course?
So there's one in science, that's biology. There's one in social studies, that's US history. And then there's an English course and a, and an algebra course. Right now it's Algebra I.
All right. So you have, and you have in the course, but I don't know which one you mean. So maybe we can identify the ones we're going, the ones we're looking at. Yeah. Whatever, whatever in the course it is, I should identify whether it's English, social studies, or MAP, or whatever it is, I should identify that. And so we can, we can incorporate, the reason I want to incorporate some of the, the standard, the, the state standard stuff, because they're independent of our way of thinking. We get to see someone else's point of view, what's, what's, what the state thinks you're doing. Or it could be like the SC Ready or the MAP. We get, we get to see the growth, the growth by MAP. MAP doesn't tell us necessarily where we are. It shows how much the student has grown from where they started to where they are now. But it still could be three grade, three grade levels behind, but we see the growth that what they had. But I think the SC Ready tries to show us where they are today. So I think the combination would be good, whatever it is. So that's, that's basically my thoughts. Could we have some standardized testing in place?
Is, is there a direct question for Dr. Bridges in, in addition to?
Yes. So you want it, you were in agreement with this too, yourself? Your thoughts on this?
I hadn't seen it until tonight, but very much so based on your budget and those three areas that you identified that was driving it, I think is excellent.
So should we be considering what time the school bus comes or hopefully the school bus late? Is that a good, something to consider?
God, yes.
Shh. Is that, is that a good item, school bus? I don't have my, my, I don't have my route to reach from just the end of that end. So I had to use shh instead. But capital projects completion without negative impact on education. Did the kids get a good lunch that morning or good breakfast?
Reverend Collins, what are you?
I have some testing there to see if I'm paying attention. But it does say.
We're paying attention.
It does say, the third one does say is percent increase in lunch and breakfast participation. So all I know, the kids have a good breakfast or lunch that day.
Can I call the question?
Yeah.
So is there any other questions?
I just, when a man talks, he doesn't say shush. I do think if I could, so if you, some of us look at this, and we know that in the state of South Carolina, there are only two, I believe I'm correct, two approved tests that measure growth from start to finish of the year. And the only one aligned with the state standards is MAP.
The one more aligned is MAP.
More, right, more. So when I see percent of primary students who met or exceeded one year's academic growth, I know that means one through three, four, five. I know that means MAP, because that's what we do. When it says percent of middle grades who met or exceeded one year's growth, I know that means six, seven, eight, and that means MAP. But to Reverend Collins's point, he didn't know that's what that meant. And when you have FAST delineated as the assessment for early learning, maybe this changes annually or changes when the state does it. But you put on there, just like you said, FAST assessment, you could put next to that MAP test, so that it is clear to, to any layman who doesn't have all the stuff that board members have. And ditto for Lexile scores and Quantile scores. Those are scores of SC Ready, because it's state law that they take SC Ready, and those are the scores of it. But it doesn't say that. So maybe we want to put some more identifying language in here so that folks who don't actually look at that and then automatically think that would realize that's what it's talking about. And so this is more to the board, I guess, because teacher retention by definition is turnover and length of, length of employment. So I, I, I like the number of teacher vacancies at the beginning of the term, but I'd like to see something that is percentage of staff in the schools to measure turnover. I think that would be a good measurement. I don't know if, I'm not saying we need 86 categories, but I think percentage of turnover is, is that as important as number of vacancies, just in the terms that you can have 10 vacancies in a school with 50 teachers, you can have 10 vacancies in a school with 20 teachers. I wonder if the board would want to put on there something about length of service, number of teachers who have spent X number of years in CCSD, you know, benchmark that. I absolutely agree with the buses arriving on time, because until Michael Miller drilled that into our heads, we never realized that equals learning time. So we.
Do you have a question, ma'am?
Absolutely. I did. I just asked it. So we absolutely have to keep that. I would ask, instead of capital projects completion, and again, it's more of a question for the board, but would it be completion on time and on budget? I mean, I like the idea of negative impact on education, but on time and on budget is negative impact of education, considering most of our projects are done outside of the school day. And the last thing I would ask that we consider is with communication, dashboards. We've created a system of communicating to parents and students and. We've created a system of communicating to parents and students and showing how it does go up the grade levels with them and matriculates with them. I think we would be remiss not to have that as something important enough that it's included in our measurements of success in communication. Thank you, Eric.
All right. Mike?
First of all, thank you for the work that you've done and listening to all of our craziness about a whole bunch of stuff and trying to make sense of sometimes things that don't make sense to us, but I guess we like to hear ourselves talk sometimes. One of the questions that I did have is since there seems to be a revolving door around state standardized testing, is there any way in your mind that we could use maybe a standard that the state doesn't use, but other states traditionally have been using for a longer period of time? Because I think it's very difficult for us to judge JARITAS or any superintendent's progress in our system when state standards change from time to time. So, is there any way that we could use, let's say, a standard that, let's say Vermont's using? And let's say Vermont and 30 other states are using the same standardized testing in their systems and their school districts across those states. And it's been consistent over the last 10, 15, 20 years. Could we adopt something like that, maybe in addition to what the state would ask, just so we could have a benchmark to determine where we are and what we're doing? Because it's difficult to measure her success if the goal line keeps changing. Or we can just tell the state we're not going to take any more standardized assessment.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, that.
I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago with a guy named John Tanner. If you are familiar with, I know Dr. Postaway is. And he's doing a lot of work in Texas and Georgia and nationally about standardized testing and particularly these ABC assignments to schools and school districts. And I spent a day with him in Rowan County and he was talking about multiple measures. And North Carolina is doing something called restart schools.
Okay.
Schools that have been unsuccessful over a period of time. And they basically are giving them block grants to say, "You decide."
Okay.
And...but they didn't take away the fact those kids still had to take the North Carolina standard, you know, those tests. So, maybe in the eyes of administrators and teachers, that may look like you're putting more on my plate. So, if the state of South Carolina is saying, "Yeah, we'll give you some flexibility to do some of the things you just described, but that's a Charleston County schools issue. You don't get to take these things off."
Right.
So, you end up giving them more to do. The good thing about the restart situation is that they are looking at testing kids on what they're smart at. You know, we all are really smart at some things and not as smart as others, and we got to be successful doing those things that we're smart at. All of our kids are smart. Just got to figure out what they're smart at.
Right.
And the things that they're not as smart.
100%.
So, a lot of his work is around that. I would advise it to do some of his readings, but unless the state is going to give you some leniency on the overcrowded plate that our teachers and principals currently have adding additional things to that, it probably won't serve you well.
Just a thought. I may also thank JARITA for and the staff for bringing the district indicators to us. I mean, I've always been advocating for drilling it down, just boiling it down, boiling it down to the student and identifying needs, strengths, and interventions that were taking place within each student to see exactly where our kids are and what we need to do. Back to your question about how things ought to be directly linked to the budget and results, student achievement and student results ought to be intertwined with that budget. And so, this, I think, is a very good blueprint. Obviously, there's a lot of things I'd love to see on here in addition to this, but I think this is a good blueprint to start with. And I don't want to delay with a point, but on Cindy, when we were talking, when Reverend Collins made the point and you made the point about the lunch and breakfast participation, at my daughter's school, they qualify to get the free breakfast and lunch program.
Full school, the full school, yeah.
Yeah. And I would...and before JARITA became a board member, I asked, who's over food services?
Campbell.
Campbell. I asked him to bring us a sample. And I've never gotten that sample, and I understand why.
I thought you were still living.
Because if any of us, when you go visit a school...
We used to have it delivered, remember?
Go...if you're there for breakfast, see what they provide the kids for breakfast. It's full of sugar and all this. I mean, it's not the kind...I know we make, not necessarily make fun of it, but I think when you haven't been in school in such a very long time, you don't realize how important a nourishing breakfast can be to an adolescent. Yep. And so, I think...I'm glad that this was on that list, JARITA, because I think this is just as important as facilities. Because when kids are taking MAP tests and SC Ready tests and PASS tests and now the FAST test and next month it'll be the SLOW test and whatever the state will come up with, those kind of things play, I believe, a role in how our children may or may not be able to perform. And so, I think we have to look at the, not just the child that we're educating, but every aspect of the child while they're in our possession and in our care, because I think it all matters. And the last thing I'd like to say, I know on page four, you have a listing of what the principal nine evaluation standards are and the four teacher domains were. And all I would say, when you mentioned the teachers, you mentioned, they didn't mention any data points, but if they did all four well, that should drive student achievement. And unless we find another way to determine how to measure student achievement, there has to be data points, in my opinion. Now, what those data points will look like, we're obviously up for debate, but I think it's difficult to say whether or not a teacher is effective or not if there isn't any mathematical determination as to what that is.
And there always will be.
Right. And same thing with principals and then IE, same thing with superintendent and the whole district. So, again, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
So, I'd just like to say thank you to all the board members for your comments, your questions. And if I'm hearing correctly, we're giving Dr. Bridges marching orders to develop a tool that he will get back to us within the next couple of weeks.
Three days.
With hopes of, at our June board meeting, to be able to finalize the evaluation tool moving forward.
Reverend Mac, why is it from July to July, 13 months?
So, we established that for two reasons. One, as we start out with the strategic plan moving forward and have developed the tools of the evaluation, we start in that July period and then in November, the other component of the test scores that will be derived will be able to assess accordingly in that manner. So, we came up with that matrix to be able to cover both half of the test scores being revealed and also the strategic plan that has been put in place in evaluating and assessing it. Now, it gives a midpoint timeframe as well to be able to give feedback...
I saw that.
...to the superintendent to make sure that two, one, we're giving the necessary tools that's needed to help her to be successful and also for the district to be successful moving forward. So, it gives a midpoint and then an after point thereafter to be able to make sure that we're giving a fair assessment evaluation moving forward.
So, July is when we actually do the evaluation?
You do part of the evaluation.
That's when the last data comes in?
Data doesn't come from the state until like October.
October. So, we'll do the...
Can't use that, I know. So, what I'm saying is, is the data coming in past June when kids are out of school? Are you waiting for till that July? Or is that just a random deadline?
So, if you start the conversation this July, that's step one. You've got your strategic plan summary and you've got your strategic plan moving forward and those three items that you've identified for the upcoming 18, 19 school year. You checkpoint that in December with that ongoing conversation and next July, you finalize that evaluation for the school year. Does that make sense?
So, you finalize that for the school year? Okay.
That's the school year. And contractually, your contract with the superintendent is a yearly evaluation.
So, in other words, so as I said, for 20, next school year, we evaluate her that July after the school year, which would be the first one, this, right?
It would start...
Wouldn't be one this year.
No, right. It would start this July and as Reverend Mac said in the beginning, your summative evaluation would be July 2019.
Yeah, 19, 19, 20 school year.
So, there's a greater possibility?
School year. Right. He's saying July of 19 would evaluate the 18, 19 school year.
Right.
Wait a minute.
Let Eric finish talk about this, because he talked about when you were in the MAC.
So...
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
The plan moving forward initially is to adopt this evaluation tool for July 2019 to begin, but we have an existing evaluation tool already in place. This could literally replace it to where we can, the first portion of this evaluation could literally start this July and the other component being completed afterward, if so desire, to move in that direction, of course, in collaboration with the superintendent, if she so desired. Because initially, we already have, from the last evaluation that we did, that tool is the one that we have in place. So, if, as we begin to finalize on this piece and we say, okay, this, you know, we would like to begin with this and in consultation with the superintendent and she agrees, then, you know, we begin with this tool ready moving forward.
I understand.
If you're in the middle of negotiating a contract and dealing with a new evaluation tool, I just wouldn't go haphazardly into that without having some additional advice. I can see moving forward what he's saying by coming back with the evaluation piece to put in place and if we were to put it in place the following year, but I think we need to kind of, we kind of need to work both hand in hand or not so soon.
Well, we're not in the middle of negotiating a contract.
We had, we're extending the contract, but we hadn't, we hadn't, ultimately extended the contract, but we hadn't gone to negotiate no future contract.
Right. Right now, the way, the superintendent's evaluation, the superintendent's contract says that the superintendent shall submit to the board a recommended format for conducting the evaluation and the evaluation piece. And I think what Eric is saying is that what, once we agree and vote on this, what we've been talking about, that ideally, based on how all this works, should start next summer.
Next summer.
Next summer. But if we all agree, wait. So, based on the way the contract is and everything, it would start for, you know, we would say to the superintendent, you know, this is, we can't evaluate, go back and say, "We're going to evaluate you on this new format." Unless she says, "You know what? I've been a part of all of this and I think we should use this format." So, it could be that she says, "Yeah, let's move forward with this now and we don't have to wait a year to get it started."
So, how would that go working hand in hand when negotiating the new contract for the future?
Well, I mean, right now, the way that...
I would rather get this done before the contract's up in 2020, have it in place.
Yeah, I think we all agree, we need to have something in place that we can all agree on and we don't have to argue ridiculously about it each time when it comes up. So, we can, you know, we, maybe for when we look at it in the next step, we can look at, you know, it would, on paper, it would start July, whatever, 2019, so we can make sure we're all on the same page.
So, in a couple of weeks, we'll be sending that document out to everyone to review and at our June board meeting with the expectation of adopting that tool. And then thereafter, we will then add the contract. So, stated and as I stated a couple of times previously, we will go into discussion with the superintendent if she so desires to want to use this tool now, then, and we will move forward accordingly.
Dr. Bridges, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bridges. It's been very helpful for us to navigate. Okay, so, the other information item is the financial report.
On top of the budget.
Or you just want to celebrate?
Say on top of the budget.
I think we know everything.
I imagine you've had enough budget discussion for this evening, but I would certainly invite Mr. Kennedy to make any comments if he'd like about where we are right now.
Did we get the capital projects? And we've got all that in our Friday updates.
Capital projects is early proof.
Unless there are questions.
Consent.
Okay, so, we're good. We don't have any questions. So, the next items were all consent items through item number seven, which is to convene executive session. So, I need a motion to go into executive...oh, is that not under consent?
I need to adjourn.
So, I need a motion to go into executive session. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, so, we're going back in, convening, reconvening back into open session. Our first item was a contractual matter, which was for information only. The second matter is item B, appeal of constituent board decisions. And I'd like to make the following motion. I'd like to move that we overturn the constituent board recommendation and place the following students. Student number one, number three, number 20, number 26, number 30, number 31, number 32, number 35, number 38, number 40, number 43, number 45, number 46, number 50, number 51, number 52, number 55, and 58. Do I have a second?
Second.
I call the question. So, on the student transfer appeals, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes and the motion passes. The next item, item C...
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I would make a motion to uphold the constituent board decision.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Ms. Coats and a second from Mr. Garrett to uphold the constituent board's decision on item 7C. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes and the motion passes. The next item is item 7D1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take all three of these and make a motion together if the board will allow.
Okay.
On all three, I would like to approve the request if tuition is paid.
Second.
Okay, so, there's a motion from Ms. Coats and a second from Reverend Collins on all three. So, this is item 7D1, 2, and 3 to approve and for future years if tuition is paid. Okay? Mr. Hollenshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next item is item number 7E1, is the constituent District 10 recommendation. Do I have a...
I move to approve candidate number one.
So, we have a motion from Reverend Collins to approve candidate number one. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Coats will second that? Okay. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins? Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next item is item 7E2.
I move to approve candidate number one.
Reverend Collins moves to approve candidate number one. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second, Mr. Garrett. All right, Mr. Hollenshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
All right, yes.
All right, thanks. Bye, Todd. Bye, Priscilla.